Hello and welcome to the August 28, 2024, special City Council meeting for the City of Angels. Roll call, please, Brett.
Mayor Hernan.
Present.
Vice Mayor Moncada.
Present.
Councilmember Brolio.
Present.
Councilmember Schamante.
Present.
Councilmember Sharato.
Here.
Staff is present.
I pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is approval of the agenda as posted or amended. Do we have any reason to amend the agenda as it's posted? We have no members of the public here with us. Anybody online have any reason to amend this agenda? Seeing none.
None.
Okay, seeing none, I'm looking for motion.
Sure, Lou.
Have a motion. And Alvin Second, Chris.
Schamante.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Moncada.
Aye.
Hernan.
Aye.
Sharato.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four is public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on this agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda, and speakers will be limited to five minutes per person. Anybody online have any public comment for us today? Okay, seeing none and seeing nobody here with us other than Sam, I'm going to close public comment. Item five is our regular agenda. We have 5A. It is a water rate study presentation, and we're going to have Michelle present.
Thank you. So we have Michael and Juan joining us again from Barlow Wells, our water rate consultant. I'm going to let them go forward with their presentation. They took some feedback for when they were here. We met one-on-one with them to discuss, revise some of our capital improvement plan. And so now they're bringing back the adjusted data for Council to review. I'll let Michael.
Good evening. This is Michael D. Gertz, and also Juan Espinoza is on the line. Next slide. So this is an overview of our presentation. We're going to go over the water rate study update, water bill impacts and rate survey, and then talk about the wastewater rates and rate survey and the combined bill impacts and the combined rate survey. Next slide. So this is the water rate study updates from last time. So we're not recommending an increase for the current fiscal year, which is 2425. And then we're recommending rate increases that shall not exceed 3% per year. And last time, we had presented a 5% option. And we're able to reduce this due to the use of reserves to help meet your projected capital costs instead of debt, which would require higher rates to meet debt service coverage. For the UWPA pass-through, there is also no recommended increase for the current fiscal year. And we're recommending pass-through increases to be phased in and not to exceed 6.22% per year. And we have an option to establish reserves at $250,000. And to comply with Proposition 218, the funds would need to be applied as a reduction to future rates rather than paid out as a refund. And this is because you can't charge more than the cost of service. And so by setting rates at a level that would require refunds and as part of the study, we don't think that would comply with Prop 218. So we're recommending that if you were to do this option, that you would use the funds to reduce future rates rather than refunding customers. Next slide. So this shows you the five-year water CIP funding sources. And this is without using any debt. So we're using pay-as-you-go for most of the capital. And that's the light blue bar. And then we're still assuming about 6.6 million of grants, and that is the dark blue bar. And so you can see the total CIP is 2.4 million in the first year, 3.5 million in the next two years, about 3.3 million in year four, and about 2.5 million in year five. Next slide. So this is the proposed monthly water rates. And your rate structure has two components. There's the volumetric rate, which is a dollar per 100 cubic foot, or about 748 gallons, and that's a dollar and 69 cents. And then you've got a fixed charge based on meter size. So the 5-inch meter is your smallest meter. That's $46.93, all the way up to a 6-inch meter, which is $2,346.51. And we're recommending 3% overall increases to these rates. So that would go, the usage rate would go to $1.74 in the first year, up to $1.96 per 100 cubic foot. And then that 5-8-inch meter would go from $46.93 per month up to $54.40 over the five years. Next slide. So this slide shows you the recommended UWPA charges based on a phase-in. And you're really facing about 10% increases by Utica for your wholesale waters. But you're currently charging a little bit more and generating some reserves than the current contribution amount. So we can really phase in the rate and do 6.2% rather than the full 10%. And so we're not recommending an increase in this fiscal year. So it'd be $13.91 per month for that 5-inch meter. And then for '25, '26, that would go to $14.78, and then up to $17.71 in '28, '29. Next slide. So this slide shows the annual pass-through fees that you're currently projected to collect versus the contribution. And you've currently got a reserve balance as of June 30, 2024 of $443,118. And your pass-through fees were projecting to be $418,456 in '24, '25. And the contribution amount is $370,000. So you would increase your reserves by about $48,456. And then you can see we're phasing that in to match the contribution amount exactly in '28, '29, which is $541,717. And so these proposed rates get you there so that you're not generating additional reserves. And based on this plan, you would have about a year of contributions in that reserve balance to use for further smoothing. Next slide. So this shows you graphically what this looks like. Essentially, the blue bars are the Utica water and power contribution. And then the light gray bars is the additional reserves that they're generating. And the dotted blue line is your projected UWPA pass-through fees that you're collecting based on our 6.22% scenario. And so if you were to set your reserve balance at $250,000, you would currently have $193,118 of additional reserves. And then you can see the light gray bar shows you the additional amount above that contribution that you would be generating each year. And so again, we recommend to apply these reserves to reduce the rates rather than refunding that amount each year to comply with Prop 218 if you're to go with that option. Next slide. So this shows you the impact on the single-family home for a monthly bill. And currently, your monthly bill is for 1,100 cubic foot per month, which is the average usage, is $79.43. And based on the 3% increases, that would go to $82.26 in year one, and then up to $94.56 over the five years. Next slide. So this is a regional rate survey that shows how your current and proposed rates compare to regional agencies. And you can see that the average for the region is about $89.54. And you're currently below the average of $79.43. And with the first increase going into effect next year, you'd still be below the current average for the survey at $82.26. Next slide. So just want to touch on the wastewater rates that we talked about last time. Just like water, there's no increase recommended for this fiscal year, '24, '25. And we're recommending 2% maximum annual increases on the wastewater. Next slide. So this was the option that was selected. And essentially, we are recommending 2% overall increases. And so that single-family residential unit is currently $107.95 per month. That would go to $110.11, and then up to $119.19 over the five years. And we're recommending changing the way the non-residential rates are structured so that all the rates are based on usage. And so it's annualized winter use. And that would be the same as other institutional are currently charged, subject to a minimum wastewater charge, which would be $139.03 in the first year. And that would go up to $150.49 in year five. And the volumetric rate would go from .0212 per gallon of winter use up to .0228. So it's just 2% overall increases being applied here. Next slide. So we have one new thing that was brought to our attention by the city staff is that you have these mixed-use customers. And we're recommending that for these customers, you treat them like a normal commercial account and base the charge on winter usage. But for the minimum charge, we're recommending that they be charged, one commercial charge per commercial account plus one residential charge per residential dwelling unit. So for an example, a property with 13 residential units and two commercial accounts on one meter, the rate would be the winter usage times the usage rate. And then the minimum charge, you would have 13 of the residential rates plus two of the commercial minimum for the minimum charge. So that's the one new thing that we're bringing forward on the wastewater rates. Next slide. And so this is the proposed rates. You can see for the residential unit, it would be one, it's currently $107.95. That would go to $110.11 in the first year, up to $119.19. And next slide. This shows a regional rate survey for the wastewater rates. And you're currently above average. The average for the region is $81.70 per month. And you're at $107.95, and you'd go to $110.11. Next slide. So this shows you the combined bill impacts, including the water plus the sewer. And so for a single-family home, that's currently $187.38 per month. And that would go to $192.37 for the combined bill, up to $213.75 over the five years. Next slide. And this shows you a combined regional survey for a single-family, factoring in both the water and the sewer. So the light blue bars is the water bill, and the green bars is the sewer. The average for the region was $184.13, and you're just about the average at $187.38. And then you're proposed to go to $192.37. And you know, for these surveys, we don't have the rates that the other agencies are proposing for the next fiscal year, so we're comparing them to the current rates. So we had to anticipate that you would remain around the average once we factor that in. And that's it for the presentation.
So. Okay, so thank you for that. I'm going to go ahead and open up the floor. For, Michelle, do you have anything that you want to add to that?
Questions?
Okay. And I'm going to open up the floor for comments or questions. I know several of us probably have questions. I'll start with you, Charlie.
Okay. So I guess my question, this is really more for staff because we are collecting on CIP. And it seems like we haven't really completed much of the CIP we've collected over the last five years. So I'm a little hesitant to say, let's go ahead and budget towards, I don't know how many millions of dollars you're talking about for wastewater especially, but I'm concerned that we're collecting these funds and that we're not going to get the CIP done in five years that we're collecting upon because we don't have a very good charter right now. So I don't even know who to address.
Part of this plan that they're proposing for the CIP is that we use the reserves, which are the funds we've collected in the past. So we won't, we'll be taking our reserves, I believe, down to, was it 2.5 million? Michael?
Yeah, for water, in over five years, it would go to about 1.8 million based on the 3%.
Based on the 3%. So we're actually using the reserves that we have to cover a lot of these. And then I can let Steve talk to a little bit about what we've been doing, working with Dan Richards from Dewberry, and kind of taking it here by here with the CIP and calling it to the council.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. And then Mayor and Council. So I can't commit to anything longer than I'm here, but I can tell you that while I have been here, I have met with our contractor at Dewberry, both on the water and the wastewater side. And we have gone over, staff with Dewberry sat in a room and went over both five-year CIPs, the water CIP and the wastewater CIP, and confirmed that everything that's on those plans currently is, are still viable projects. They didn't go so far as to say, yes, within these five years, we will complete each of these five-year projects on both of these water and wastewater plants. But they did confirm they are still things that should be done. We're committed to doing them. But I didn't go so far as to nailing them down on a timeline for each of the five-year items. Then we went to a one-year plan. So in your budget this year is the five-year wastewater CIP and the five-year water CIP, and then a one-year wastewater CIP and a one-year water CIP. And Dewberry and staff have committed to, at least beginning, all of those one-year projects this year, if not completing all of those one-year projects this year. So that's probably not the answer that you're looking for, but I can tell you that there is a commitment from staff and from Dewberry to at least begin each of the CIP projects on the water and on the wastewater side that are currently in your budget.
So I think I have a question that piggybacks on that. And I'm talking pretty hypothetic. I don't have the numbers in front of me for the CIP. But hypothetically, if in the second year of this plan, there is, for round number $500,000 that has been paid in to the reserves earmarked for one of the CIP, whether it's water or wastewater, and something has happened along the way and that gets punted and it doesn't get performed, that money just stays there and it builds, and it builds, and it builds. Is there a way, a mechanism, to pay back the contributors, the water rate payers, that has paid in whatever increase that was at the end of that year, rather than to have it just grow and grow and grow? I'm just asking hypothetically. Is there a mechanism to do that?
I can let Michael speak to that, but it's the same as the UWPA fee. The Prop 218 can be. You won't allow a rebate. So you reduce rates. So what does rate study establishes the most you can charge? So every year, we talk about when we bring our rates annually to council, you know, this is what's suggested. We could bring that data and council could set it at a lower rate. They could say.
Each year, we say, are we going to increase up to this amount? Or we don't need to because we didn't use last year's? Which is kind of what we've done over the four years that I've been on this council is we haven't needed to raise the rates at the threshold that we were allowed to.
Correct. So we could say it's, you know, water year.
But you can't pay back. You can't give them a Christmas present.
We didn't complete these projects. We anticipate, you know, using the funds here. You know, and then this council could make the recommendation on the increase. It's just we can't increase it more than what the study said.
Correct. Okay. That was my main question.
I know you two hit on my question, so.
Same thing?
Yeah.
So I guess for me, my question would be is, does the 3% get our water projects done? Because I'm hoping that that's the gears we're changing into and we're moving forward. And I knew a little bit about some conversations. So my only thing is, I just want to make sure that those, the projects that are in the CIP, because there is some grant funding in year '25, '26, '27 that has to come through also, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. That's the FEMA grant we're waiting to hear from.
Right.
That's in the final stages.
And then the only other thing I have too is, that 6.22% for Utica, I believe that does meet, and Joel, I saw is on line two, I believe that does meet our needs for Utica for the budget we passed there. And I think we meet that for this year. But my only concern is if, at some later date, if water rates go up there, because they have a lot of CIP projects to plan that we've held off on for these next couple of years. But FERC is in there too, and there's a lot of stuff happening in there. So, and I'm happy whittling that down. I think we were at 5% prior, weren't we, Michael?
Yeah. Yes. We're trying to.
Yeah, so I'm happy whittling the 2% out of there. And I think we met with staff and we've gone over what projects we think we can do. We've pumped it some out, and that's how we got the rates down. So, thank you, staff.
Okay.
I'm concerned about, you know, the total cost at the end of the five years is going to be $316, almost $320 more a year for our customers. And I kind of agree with Caroline. You know, we have, in good faith, we've collected this money, but we haven't done any projects. And I see a list of projects that we can do, and our reserve is about $12 million. And we're going to keep about, I guess I understand it's important to keep a reserve, but that reserve is really money we've collected from our rate payers, and we haven't really done anything. I'd be more comfortable with 2% because I truly don't think that we're going to be able to get through all these CIP projects. I think some of the projects that you listed in your presentation, you know, regarding the automated meter reading, I think those are important to allocate. I think the wastewater projects are being funded because we agreed to a 2%. But I'm not sure we can get through all of the water projects. And I don't want to be collecting money and just have it sit there. I don't think that's what we should do in good faith.
Remember that 3% is the limit.
Right.
You could, as a council, decide a 2%.
Right. So we. Right.
Right. I'd be comfortable with 2%.
If we approved the 3%, then we can go in as if we're only going to bump it to 2. But if there's something that happens that we have to, we can bump it to 3.
Where those projects are getting done, you can keep it rolling.
Then the other.
Sorry, let me ask you. So you're not, you're not upset with the 3% if the projects are getting done and the money is being spent?
Right.
It's only if the money and projects aren't getting done, you don't want to be collecting that extra.
Extra money and just have it and have us just sit on.
So, but if projects are getting completed, then we can leave it where it's at. If they're not, then we can bump it down. I'm just, I'm just.
I do, I still worry a little bit about the number of our citizens who are on a fixed income and their retirements aren't. And I think we have to be mindful of that. I think 2% in my mind is something, if like the cost of living and the, you know, Consumer Price Index and all that, that's someplace similar where it falls. And, you know, everything's got to go up a little bit. But I don't, and I, okay, and I, I just want to be mindful of doing, be the best stewards we can as we move forward. The other thing, we kind of arbitrarily said that we're going to keep $250,000 in reserve for Utica. If that's the direction the council wants to go, the council could, you know, and if you spend it down by another $50,000, that really isn't going to lose that rate. And I think Utica is going to be a bigger discussion down the road. I agree with you. You know, once FERC is done and things, and, you know, how much money do they truly need to run, especially if we get our exemption? So what I'm hearing, and I'd be okay with, what I'm hearing is, you know, we could set it at 3, but implement a 2% until we need to go to 3.
We, what I, what I understand is you set it at a rate. So set it at 3, and then each year you address it. And you might say, I'm not comfortable with 3 because we haven't met the CIP requirements or we aren't geared up or, you know, whatever the circumstances. So maybe we only adopt a 2%. I think that's how we've handled it in the last four years here.
So you guys have taken action every year, setting the rates?
I remember, am I wrong?
Well, I don't know. I haven't been on long.
Yeah, no, I remember taking action at least twice.
There was. The budget process. And we have, and let me ask this too, Michael. In this one, I don't believe there is. In the, in the past rate study we adopted, there was a sliding scale where in, in bad years of water, we could slide it up without having, for Utica and different things, or we could slide it down. And we just kind of stayed in the middle of the road as a water year 3. Is that in here at all? Is there a sliding scale? Or we are 100% fixed at the 6.22%?
Yeah, so you can add pass-through language into the Prop 218 so that if the costs from Utica come in higher, then you can automatically pass that through. But you need to send a 30-day notice that you're implementing the pass-through. So that's something that we can add into the Prop 218 notice if the council would like us to do that.
And that would be, explain that again, on the pass-through? For what purpose? I got confused.
In case something happens. So what we have, what we have now, there's a sliding scale. You could, you could bill it a water year 6 or bill it a water year 1. We decided to keep it at even keel. And that was only for when you had like a, you had a bad, 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 that revenue wasn't being generated. So you could slide that scale to help. And that's what he's saying is right now it's only 6.22%. But you could add in the language to say, if there was something catastrophic or whatever, you could bump that rate, but you need to send out a 30-day notice, correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Isn't that what the reserve is for?
That's, but now we have a reserve also.
If you exhaust it, your reserve, or if it's in it.
Yeah, I would exhaust that $250,000 long before we did anything else. It just, that sliding scale was kind of a warm and fuzzy blanket if you had four bad water years in a row. We could if we ever had to. But we didn't have $250,000 reserve five years ago either.
So, Michael, you and Michelle have talked about not entering into any long-term debt. Is that correct?
Correct.
And what's the rationale for that?
I can let Michael say it, but it's basically, that was what was driving the rates up to 5% because you have to show income to meet the amount you're going to borrow. Is that correct, Michael?
Yeah, that's right. So typically, you need to set your rates so that you're generating at least 125% of annual debt service. And so that's, when we eliminated the debt service, we didn't have to send the rates as high.
And then I know you have concerns about holding onto the reserves. This also, by not doing debt, spends those reserves,[1770.46] This also by not doing debt spends those reserves and we get down to the 1.8 million in reserves instead of like 15 million or something like that.
So you actually, Michael and Michelle, you actually have another million dollars to play with on these CIP projects, correct? So if you, if you factored in spending down to the 12 million, spending the $12 million down, that would impact our 3% rate too then? By whatever percent that would be.
If 3% is factoring in spending down.
Two, one point. One point, right.
Which is what they recommend keeping in reserves.
Because. Oh, yeah, I know, but I want to hear him say it.
That's okay. Go ahead, Michael.
I want to hear him say it.
Keeping the reserves.
Right, so the question is why do we need the reserves?
Why do we need the reserve set at the threshold of 1.8?
As opposed to a percent of the total budget?
Yeah, so you're allowed to carry prudent reserves in case of emergency. So if something were to happen, like an earthquake or a fire, and you have, you know, you would need cash on hand in order to deal with that. So that's why you really need the reserves in case of emergency. And also, you know, we have a recommended minimum threshold, which is for the O&amp;M, 25% of annual O&amp;M. And that is about 600,000. But the additional would be for any emergencies or capital improvements, that kind of thing.
And then, did you guys discuss at all, Michelle, increasing the, what's it, the cap program or CARES or whatever that program's called for those folks that are.
So that's generated from non-fee. It's late fees.
Late fees.
So we would have to come up with another program to cover that. We can't use the reserves or money we've collected based on fees to pay that, or not fees, but rate, rates. It can't be rate-generated revenue. It has to be another form. So that's why we currently are using what we collect in late fees to pay for that. So if there was a different type of income that, you know, we could come up with or, you know, generate. I know we accept donations. We could push a more robust, because we have a few individuals that come in and say they want to help individuals with their water bill monthly. And they write a check to the city and we can put it in that cap program.
On the non-residential volumetric rates, how many businesses, those are non-residential, so they're all commercial businesses? How many will be drastically affected by this change? I mean, they'll all be affected, but have we ran the metrics or the estimation of what type of impact, both good and bad, that provides?
We're working on that summary right now. So we hope to have something in the next month that would have that data of the impact and how many people would be affected.
I'm just thinking out loud if it's, I mean, we have a notification process with the rules and the guidelines of the 218. So that would all give enough notification in a bad situation to that, to that impact and/or a good situation. They would, they would get the proper notification of this change. It's drastic.
Michael, if I'm correct on the change with the sewer, there is a flat rate up to a certain amount of usage, and then after that they're charged. Is that correct? Is that the one you presented?
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. Or another way to think about it is just all volumetrics subject to a minimum charge. So that's kind of how I like to explain it.
So there's, so they have, I mean, if we go to the slide for wastewater.
It's almost like 38. Yeah. Yeah, so let's dive into that a little bit more. I guess I want to be able to speak to it, and I don't know that I'm fluent yet.
I think it's. That's, I think, yeah. There's someone.
There.
Yeah. Wastewater rates?
Yes.
And there's the volumetrics at the bottom.
Can you, Michael, walk the council through this?
Yeah, so currently you have two categories of non-residential customers. You have other institutional, which are kind of heavy water users. And they currently pay volumetrically, not subject to any minimum charge. And that's based on annualized winter use and as a proxy for sewer flow. And that's .0208 dollars per gallon. And then your other commercial users pay a flat rate of 136.30. And so what we're proposing to do, because the definitions aren't very clear between how you categorize between other institutional and the fixed rate customers, is to charge everyone the same, that's non-residential. And so it would, they all pay the current other institutional rate, subject to the 2% increase. So that would be .0212 in the first year per gallon of winter use. And then it's subject to a minimum charge of what the current flat rate would be, which is the 139.03. So everyone's going to be on the same system moving forward. And we think that's more fair and more equitable way to charge customers.
Okay, you lost me at the end there. So everybody's paying the same. Everybody's paying, because the, because the language is the same. They're all commercial. So they're all paying .0212 volumetric at a rate not to exceed 139? No.
Not to exceed. As a minimum.
A minimum.
So everybody will pay the least amount of base of 139.03. And then the ones that use over the minimum volumetric amount will be charged additionally.
And what is that minimum?
Usage?
What is the amount of usage?
gallons, Michael. Do you know?
He does.
In terms of gallons, it's about 8.700 cubic feet. And so just roughly 6,500, yeah, 6, 6,500 gallons.
Typical restaurant use 65? That's wastewater, right?
That's wastewater.
Yeah.
That's wastewater.
That's what you.
I mean, that's, that's water. That's. That's everything. That's dishes.
You could use.
And that's where you're kind of running the forecast on.
The water.
And how many of those are.
Right. So the restaurants, the hair salons, the people who are using more versus a retail shop. Retail shop would probably always hit the minimum. Whereas somebody who's generating more due to the, you know, food or, you know, whatnot, then would then pay that minimum and then above it the 0.212.
But this puts everybody that's not a resident in the, they're all paying the same.
They're all in the same category. They're all.
It makes it all even to everybody.
Residential base is 110.11, correct?
Right.
So.
Residential fixed.
Fixed, yeah. With the, with the base.
And then there's a.
Volumetric, yeah, consumption.
And was six miles, six mile before, they were on the volumetric, now they're going to go to the fixed.
Mm-hmm. They should be.
Right, they're resident, exactly. Should have been that way, yes.
And we're, we actually had Michael look at their contract. And we're even doing this, but they're still under what I believe the agreement was. Is that correct, Michael?
Yeah, it's pretty close to what they're currently paying, but I think we're maybe a little bit under.
Right. And so this will just, it'll make it simpler in terms of billing, but then also everybody will be on that same rate method. So you don't have multiple rate charges.
I guess the only question that I have, and I've been, I've been asked this a couple of times, is commercial, there's just commercial and there's residential and nothing in between. And there's a big difference between a residential, I think with regard to wastewater and water. But there's a big difference between like restaurant usage, who's doing a lot of volume. And I'm going to throw out like an antique store who doesn't even have a bathroom for the public, barely washes their hands or uses a water sink for anything at all. They're paying quite a higher rate even though they aren't commercial like a big giant restaurant. So I've been asked that, like, why does commercial not take into consideration like type of use? A hair salon is going to use a whole lot more water than a real estate office who just washes their coffee cup for a second or two. There's no way to take that into consideration.
This would.
A stuff. Well, we still have our base. Commercial is still 139.
Correct. How does the base rate compare to what commercial's paying currently now who are on a flat rate? Do we have that?
Yeah, what's that?
36, right.
Is that, oh yeah, current rate's 136. So they'd go from 136 to 139.
But what I've been asked now is why is commercial paying 136 when they're not using any more than a house that's doing showers and laundry and bathing and everything at 107? And I've never been able to answer that question to our public.
Yeah, so the reason they pay more is we actually base the amount of usage on the average for the commercial customers. So, you know, there's many different ways you can slice and dice rates. And when we looked at your usage for the single family versus the, this commercial and industrial class, we saw that the commercial on average uses more water. And so it's just based on an average of the commercial and industrial class.
I just know that our small, commercial, mom and pop, very, very small, um, commercial businesses are struggling. And they, they've always asked, why, why is everything so expensive for us? We're not using that much. They're willing to pay consumptive, but wondering why the base is so much higher for them. And the comparison is just those little nickel and dime mom and pop and antique stores, uh, copyers or. Yeah, where they literally don't use any more, way less water and consumption than a, than a residence or a house or a restaurant that's got a lot of foot traffic.
Yeah, but you're, you're taking the average, so some people are going to.
I know, but it's.
Other people are going to get rewarded, so it's, yeah.
Or driving them up, I should say, not dragging them down.
It's not equitable.
Yeah, it's not. It's unfortunate.
Is that, Michael, is, I'm sorry, go ahead. Steve, you were going to say.
Yeah, that's okay, go ahead.
Michael, is it difficult to do commercial and designate whether or not it's retail stores or clothing and make that different than? Is that too hard to track?
Yeah, you can do that. What you could do is eliminate the minimum fixed charge and just have it 100% volumetric. That's a common rate structure. And another thing you could do is you could have different strength categories. So like low, medium, and high. So low would be like an office that doesn't put a whole lot of like oil and grease into the system. And then a medium strength would be something like a residential customer. And then a high strength would be something like a restaurant. The con to that is it, does restaurants have really high load, what's called loadings? And which is a kind of like oil and grease and that kind of thing. So it shifts a lot of costs onto restaurants if you were to do a structure like that, rather than just kind of charging everyone the same. So that's something that we could look at if you'd like us to.
Yeah, I don't know how much of a pain it would be to track. So if somebody came in for a new business license, you'd have to, they would have to say what they were going to do in that business. And then you would, you would set that rate based on what their point of delivery is or what they're doing, correct?
Yeah, we have a list of categories between low, medium, and high based on the type of use. And so you'd kind of go off of that.
Michael, is it, could you keep this commercial and industrial structure you have here and have a flat rate plus the volumetric? For certain businesses and then for others kind of treat it as genus and or as a, as a residential rate? Like for a coffee company or a clothing store or an antique store that, you know, that may have a toilet, but that toilet's not even being used by the public?
Yeah.
I think similar to us. He shared low, medium, and high. So that would be a low.
Right.
And he could give us definitions of what fit into the low.
I mean, I don't want to penalize the restaurants. I just, I just.
I just want it to be fair.
Yes.
And it has been brought to my attention that, yeah, that there's, there's businesses that don't have volume. They don't have foot traffic. And they are paying a higher base rate and almost being penalized in a way because they're commercial.
Sure.
And I, and I guess there's, this is how we're speaking to it. Go ahead, Steve, do you have ideas on this?
I do. Michael, can you, this is Steve. Can you correct me if I'm wrong? As I'm looking at this, regardless of how we've done in the past and are currently doing it, starting in the 25, 26 for the new proposed rate, all residenials will pay $110.11 regardless of how, the volume of wastewater.
Right.
And there will be no more commercial, industrial, other industrials, six-mile, non-residential. All that goes away. If you're not a residential customer, you're automatically a non-residential customer. And you're going to pay $139.03 every month unless you wastewater flow more than $139.03. And it's based on the amount of wastewater that goes out. So it's kind of built in to have a, a low, mid, and a high level without designating a low, mid, and high level. And it can be seasonal based upon how much the commercial or the industrial user uses throughout the different seasons of the year. It gets adjusted based on their actual usage rather than adjusted based on the type of business that they are. It might be that they use much more water or outflow in the waste system, much more water in a particular couple of months in the year. And if so, their rates go up. And when their, when their volume goes down, their rates go down. So it automatically adjusts based on the season of the year and the type of business that it is without having to pre-designate a low, medium, and high.
True.
Right, Michael?
Yeah, in terms of volume, yes.
And the argument though, or the question is, explain to me how a residential four-bedroom house with three kids and a husband and a wife that's taking all these showers, washing cars, doing laundry, cooking and cleaning, is using that much water and wastewater? And an antique store that doesn't even have a bathroom for the public, barely turns on their sink, flushes the toilet twice, and waters their house plant once a week? That commercial is paying more than that residential and it is in balance. And I can't speak to it. And I, and I don't have the answer. I just know that that's how it's been presented to me. And it's a hard argument because we know households are using more and restaurants are using more, but the small businesses are struggling.
You can write it off. Can't do it at home.
And I don't know, and I'll just speak for me. I think the 139.03, that takes the average across all of it. And our big users are restaurants and I'll use the.
Oh, MACT, MACT?
Right.
That is how, I mean, like, those are big office spaces.
Right, but those are, I mean, how many, what's the percentage? What's the percentage of those businesses? I mean, are those bigger users aren't 50%, I don't think, are they? Of the businesses in Angels Camp? I don't know. I'm saying it, but then you have, but then you have the, you have the mom and pop business that flushes a toilet twice and washes her hand once. So, I don't know. And MACT and those guys will be paying, they will dip into this volumetrics for sure.
6500 gallons.
The mom and pop will still be at that rate, not using their total allotted anywhere. So I, I don't know what to do because my family of four uses way more water than my mom and dad. You know what I mean? But I'm still paying the same base rate of 110.11.
You have one, one lady who gives a lot, and then you have a family of six, and we're still paying the same base rate.
Right, so I, I mean, I don't know how you make it fair without really, really convoluted.
You're going to get into the weeds if you don't.
Yeah, I mean, or you go to the number of faucets in your house. You know, if you, if you have a five-bedroom, five-bath.
Fair values.
Right, then you go to the number.
And how many faucets you have.
Right, you know, so then you're billing by the number of units. And that, that could take it down. But that's a whole other rate structure thing. So I don't know. For me, I'm, for me, I'm fine with this because I think it meets in the middle for now.
Yeah, and the argument for, you know, the fixed charge really is that your costs on wastewater are heavily fixed. So, you know, administration, capital, these are costs that are incurred regardless of how much is being used. And so that's kind of the basis for why you have a fixed charge.
I think it's an improvement to what we have now. I mean, it's a definite improvement to what we have now. I just, it, I'm, I'm remembering all the conversations from the small businesses that are out there.
And unfortunately, we only have, what, 1700 rate payers to...
To budget off of.
To budget off of. I mean, it's, it's harder, the smaller your community, the harder it gets and more in the weeds you get because that's why Fair Valley was talking about, how many toilets do you have? How many faucets do you have? Because if you have a big house versus a condo, you know, that's, who's that, who, where's that volume metric kind of coming from? So... But businesses can write it, I mean, they can't, that's the difference between a household too, is that they can put it up against their expenses, up against what they're making.
Something I'd like to point out with that Michael shared was new this year is that multi-views, we have some office spaces that have both residential and office. And in the past, they've come to City Hall and spoken with the city administrator and worked out something. Um, and that's how we've been billing them. But it's, so we asked them to come up with a methodology that we could then fairly charge everybody the same and it's not left up to the decision of the city administrator in an agreement. And, um, Michael, do, I don't, do you want to, that slide, you wanna?
This way?
I know you touched on it.
One more down, there you go. Yep. Michael, can you talk about this one just a little more?
Right. Yeah, so essentially this was something that was brought to our attention because we're adding in the minimum charge. And so the question is how are we gonna determine the minimum charge for a mixed-use customer? And what we're recommending is treat them basically like a normal commercial account and base the charge on the winter water usage. But then the minimum is gonna be based on the number of residential units times the residential rate plus the number of commercial accounts times the commercial rate. So the example we had was a 13 residential unit property with two commercial accounts. Their minimum is gonna be 13 residential rates plus two of the commercial minimum charges.
So it'd be 13 times 110 and two times 130 or whatever that number is. Is that correct, Michael?
Right, yeah, that would be the minimum charge for these customers.
And those are all individual meters?
This, this is actually a shared meter. But it's, um, I think the current, um, rate study that was done prior says it, it calls out and it says by unit. But there's not a real definition of what a unit is. It wasn't by meter. And there's one meter going into the property. And so like I said, there's not a formal agreement with the landlord. They just came in, came up with an agreement, and we've been billing them this way, so...
So this is a real life?
This is, we're asking them to put some...
This is happening right now. This is one of our scenarios.
So somebody's renting out the top floor of their house as a commercial space or downstairs and then they're living on the other floor and you're splitting that up in two ways?
Right, well, it's being done differently. We just wanted it to be documented, a methodology on how we could bill these individuals and it be fair because there's been a lot of confusion around what is a unit. And so some may have two spaces that they're counting as one. So it was, it was, we wanted more clear definition of that.
I mean, if the individual residents are living in individual units.
Right, correct.
That, with two bills.
Yeah.
Like a duplex.
Yeah, or even like a mobile home park. I mean, if you have 13 mobile homes in there, each one of them should be paying...
Mobile, yeah, mobile home. So...
Or like...
We're talking about a shared meter.
Right.
So like this, for this, one of the examples that come to mind is there's office space down below and there's...
Berths and areas, like downtown.
And there's one meter that comes in there so that we have a fair way of allocating that cost because what rate do you apply at?
Correct.
So we asked it to be, in this new rate setting, a little clearer on how to bill that. Because they weren't aware that we had some situations like that on one meter.
Can't we just talk quickly since we're talking mixed use? And it's not mixed use, but since the issue of the mobile home park was brought up. Michael, how are mobile home parks addressed in this presentation?
Yeah, I, I think it would be similar to the mixed-use methodology. So if you had a mobile home park, say it had 50 residential units, and then maybe you have an office building that's a commercial account, and it's all on one water meter, then this would apply.
Is that how the mobile home park is set up now?
There's one meter.
It's one meter and they've got, yeah.
They allocate it out amongst all of them.
Holy moses. Michael, can we go back to, um... Is there a way we could do wastewater based on meter size? Have, have you ever done something like that? And, and charged the bill based on the size of the meter like we're doing with, like with Utica and with our, you know, with water? Because if we have a 5/8 meter, because I'm assuming that a business downtown has a 5/8 meter. I'm assuming that the restaurant may have a 3-inch meter or a 2-inch meter or something. Is that, is that, did you do something like that?
Yeah, I think it's possible to create a rate structure like that. However, I'm not sure that you're, you have the data for the wastewater customers by meter size. But if you did, then we could look at that.
For example, Frog, the Frog Jump Plaza, um, that's one meter going in there for Far East, La Hacienda. You know, so that's been some sort of the issue there and how they came up with, you know, the two rates for the restaurants versus... So I'm not sure if that would work for something that has different businesses. You have some retail and then you have some restaurants on, on something like that.
I, I recently learned and I didn't know that, you know, a lot of businesses downtown share a meter.
Two businesses?
Yeah, or three businesses share the same meter.
And they just divide it by three?
Well, I think, I, you know, I, yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's, then again, it's huge. You know, if you have a salon and something else and then a retail...
Yeah, when you're sharing it, that's very...
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll figure it, so...
But now that, yeah, that one meter though on the sewer would get three commercial.
Right, but that, but that meter's gonna read how much water's gone through too at whatever that rate is per volume meter.
Right.
It's supposed to be easy, right?
Yeah, but there's no perfect rate structure. I think every rate structure is gonna have pros and cons. And so it's just a balancing act of, of pros and cons.
So can we move forward with what you've proposed today with the, with the, um, non-commercial, I'm sorry, with the commercial wastewater? But can we pull out a handful of low volumetric, low-rate users that we can identify those, those types of businesses such as a hair, or not a hair salon?
Right, true.
A beauty, uh, retail store, an antique store, or realtor's office that, that we know would be on the low end of the volumetric, if it were to be all volumetric? And can we allow them to be paid at that residential? Because we know that they're not using any more than Alvin and his family.
Look, the problem's gonna be, I'm sorry, Michael, the problem's gonna be is it's gonna be a shared, no, it's a shared meter.
Right, that's the, I, I think you're opening your Pandora's box.
That's gonna be the issue. Remember, businesses downtown that somebody owns a building...
Yeah, I'm not talking about the shares at all. I didn't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think there are more shared downtowns than we even know, I can imagine.
Well, that's the ancient infrastructure that we have probably, right?
Well, there was one big building and they made three offices.
The same thing they did with Far East, they expanded, you know, and, and La Hacienda. I don't, I just...
I don't know how you make it, I don't know how you make it.
It's split hairs. I mean, you're gonna, then you're gonna get some...
Well, and you're, you're never gonna make everyone happy. Somebody's gonna come in and say, they're gonna say, well, I only use this, right? And how do you prove that? And it's just, you're constantly chasing your tail to make everyone feel the same, feel good.
And could I suggest maybe what we could do is change the minimum charge to be equal to the single family? And that way, you know, I think that would visually look a lot more fair.
So you start at 110 and end up at 119? Is that what you're saying?
Just, yeah, so changing that 139.03 to 110.11. And that way, if you're using, you know, a very low amount of water, you're not gonna be paying more than a single-family home.
But then keep the overage at the .0212 rather than the residential at .0144. And that's where the commercial really becomes commercial.
So follow the rates, follow the rate structure, but keep the volumetric usage in there.
But what is losing that $19 per business cost us at the end?
Well, that's where I think Michelle needs to run some high-level projections on what, what all this will do. Because these are big changes to go this volumetric way, both good and bad.
Right.
But you know, places like McDonald's and, you know, you're gonna pass this cost on too to the consumers. So there's a way to recoup. And I guess there's a way to recoup that with retail folks too. I just don't wanna drive retail businesses out. And, you know, we're only talking nickels and dimes, but who knows what it takes to push somebody over the top? I guess what we need really, Steve and Michelle, and Rose, is, you know, what is the meter structure like downtown? I mean, I mean, I guess we need to know that.
I'd love to know who doesn't get past, who just pays the bare minimum on, on commercial every month.
And how are you capturing it? So if, if a business license is pulled and somebody says, I wanna open my business in between these other two businesses downtown, do you guys look and say, there's only one meter at that location? And apparently there's...
It's the responsibility of the landlord.
The landlord.
And they're not gonna...
Because I'm like, the landlord's gonna get the bill, not the, not the, not the...
And then bet on him and his rent. He's gonna incorporate whatever the fee is every month in the volume and the use...
Right, the landlord would have to know if it's a restaurant, you'd have to charge them more compared to a retail shop.
And it could go on for months.
Years.
Yeah, that somebody's just getting a water bill and sewer bill and paying it and not realizing that there's two other buildings connected to this meter too.
One thought I had about the meters and looking as we move forward with one of our capital projects, switching out all the meters to the smart meters. That might be a time to reassess and determine whether we needed to add some meters to downtown for that situation. And that's a conversation I think we need to have with Chris.
And that would be at the cost of the landlord, you know? I mean, because...
Well, but then what's the landlord gonna do? Is he gonna kick the business out? I'm just, I'm just throwing out the flip... Because it, I mean, how much is it, how much is it water, sewer, how much is the water hook up right now?
We'll have to look it up.
Just a rough number. Oh, is it 20?
Oh, it's probably, well, that'd be charged 10.
20 for water, 20 for sewer?
Yeah, but we could just charge the actual cost of a meter.
Yeah.
Installation too, I mean...
Well, but then what do you do if someone wants to build a house? I just want the cost of the, I just want the cost of the...
Well, I know, but I think, I think we're, there's a unique situation downtown because as that town grew, people threw walls up. And now you have three tenants and a building that only had one at one time, you know, I mean...
No, I, I, I know what you're saying. I'm just throwing out the flip side of the conversation.
I get, and there's gonna be people who would argue that. But I, I think there's a situation downtown that, you know, it's not, I don't, I don't think it's our best interest. But I guess, Michael, in answer to, you have an answer to Alvin's question? How is that gonna impact the total bottom number if we switch to the...
The $19 difference?
The 19, yeah. Or the...
Or 20.
It's $31 here.
Yeah.
Or, yeah.
29.
So a 5/8 meter is $123 for installation.
Right.
How much?
$123.
So, but Michael, what you're proposing is taking the, the flat amount, the same as residential, across the board. And then Alvin is asking, we, you don't know how much, what's the dollar amount that we're gonna lose if we were to do something like that?
Because your dollar amount gets bigger here. I mean, you're, you're almost a $30.
Yeah, $30 is different.
Probably a $19 at the beginning, so...
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to go back and run those numbers to, to figure that out.
I think you're, I think we're splitting hairs too much. I think, I don't know. I...
They grew from 29, but it's more than 29 up here.
Right.
I don't know, I think you've taken the average across the board. Your heavy users are still gonna get deemed the volumetric. And I, and I, and I understand that they're, that you're gonna lower that down and you're gonna kick more onto those heavy users too. So I don't know, I don't know what...
So when we're considering our rate increases each year at up to 3%, up to 2%, can we split residential and commercial? Once we've experienced a little bit, a year's worth of volumetric? Can we say we'll raise less on residential or less on commercial? Can we do that or is it across the board?
No, so you'd have to reduce it proportionally across the board to the 218.
Okay. Okay, I've asked all my questions and I think...
I, I'd like, I don't know, I don't know where we are with this, Michelle and I, but I'd, I'd like to see if you ran those numbers with that, what the dollar difference would be. I mean, you could...
Okay.
When do we have to have this for 218 and all the timing? I was gonna ask Michael, we've talked about this on the timeline. Michael, this is Alvin, what is it, what is the timeline on this if we come back in another month or whatever? And...
Yeah, so since the rates are gonna be going to affect July 1, 2025, and there's a 45-day nursing process, you know, the, the latest we could go would be June of 2025.
If you...
I'd like to see, um, uh, uh, well...
So I, I think we've got plenty of time in terms of figuring out, you know, what the revenue impact is.
Did we do that?
Yeah.
During, during the, um, during the budget, right before?
Right, prior to budget.
Budget.
It was prior to budget was when we received the plan from Dave from Dewberry.
Right. Um, and I get that and that's great. And it was bundled in with a whole bunch of stuff and we had to do budget and all this other stuff.
It did go through with the budget or was it a separate...
I, I know, I, I see what you're saying. But maybe that can be resented to us? Can we get to that presentation? Because I am not remembering all of the stuff that was going in there. And I think I need a refresher on the CIP before I, I mean, it's, it's a lot of money. And so I, I just would like to see that again.
And I'm good with getting a refresher on that CIP. I think that, um, it's a big plan. It's a big, um, futuristic need that we have identifying projects. But I'd like to actually have it be more project-driven about what is the likelihood? I mean, I know we need to update the pipeline on Booster Way. We've talked about that for years and years and years. It's finally happening now. So a date come into fruition. What about the others? Like, when is this slated for? Is it being designed right now? Is it, is it out to bid right now? What, yeah, what's the priority and what's the...
What's the number one thing we need to do, what's the number two thing we need to do? I mean, I appreciate that kind of stuff, but, but that was so long ago, it feels like it. And here we are talking about raising rates that is directly related to the CIP. So I'd love to have an overview of that again, I guess. And I'd like to hear what the priority list is, what is we're tackling first, what is that first year? I don't know, what's, what, what are we looking at here? So I just feel like a revisit, I don't know how you guys feel about that.
I agree. I'm just thinking about...
I'd say Dave, have Dave come back and, and I mean, there was the backwash station we have to redo. There are certain things that we're, the water state is after certain things that are big ones too.
So can you...
Can I just ask a question, just wanna be clear? Are we talking about rescinding the presentation that was done earlier this year? Or are we talking about either during a regular meeting or scheduling a special meeting for a whole new presentation?
No more meetings, please.
No more meetings. If we didn't work it, since we're, you know, don't have to have this done by next week, um, maybe we can have him come back and, and maybe just let him know, like, these are some of the questions that the council has, like, what are the priorities, where are we at? What's the first year things that you guys had talked about?
Okay.
That they plan on getting pushed through? I don't know, I just feel like, right, this is a big decision and I wanna make sure that I'm...
So perhaps for the second meeting in September, we can invite Dewberry to come and give a presentation on the current five-year plan as it exists and generally the priorities of each one of those projects on that list. And where we're at in, where we're at in year one? Where we're at, well, I mean, you can't...
The deliverability.
How, where are we at in deliverability of this upcoming year? If that makes sense. I think, right? Is that what we're trying to...
Yeah.
So, Mike, also...
In, in, real quick, like, in our, in our defense, we hear this, but it, until it starts to happen or we start talking about actual going out for solicitation, we don't know where it's at in the swing of things. I don't know where the crack sealing machine is, is working. I don't know what the likelihood of the project that we did talk about on Gardner Lane is at anymore. So we just, we forget it's, it's absent to us. So we don't know what's being worked on and what's being potentially delivered. So all in all, that will help us make this decision, I think. Is that what you're saying, Karen?
Yeah, yeah, a hundred percent.
Okay, good.
Can we go to slide fifteen, Michael, or maybe Rose?
This one?
No, it's, it was, it was fifteen in a packet. It was, it was table four. City of Angels Camp Draft Water CIP Plan.
Oh, that's way in the study, isn't it?
Yeah, keep going. I think of your slide.
Yeah, keep going.
Keep going?
This is...
You're on, you're on twenty-seven.
It was the data that they had set.
Oh, okay.
This one?
Yeah, and then we scroll this way.
This one?
Yeah. So one, one of my questions, when we start talking about projects in our reserve, if you look at, we have, and you want to use eleven million dollars, it, it almost ticks off those first four projects with using our reserve, correct?
Some of that has grant funding.
But, but with grant funding also though, correct? I mean, if we were to use, so it's really the bottom projects that, um, I guess what I'm saying, Mike, is that, Michael, is that, you know, you've got a total budget of eighteen million dollars, and if we use eleven million, did you build only generating seven million dollars in capital improvement based on this three percent rate increase?
Michael, were you able to hear that? I don't think you did.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I think I was muted.
That was such a good question. All right, here's your second shot. I'm relooking.
So, Michael, if you look at the totals of eighteen million dollars in round numbers, and we have basically eleven million dollars in reserves, we only need another seven million dollars? Is that what you based this rate structure on, generating seven million dollars?
Yeah, um, let's see. Are those tables I hear referring to?
Can you see the screen right now?
Uh, it's a little bit small. Okay, yeah, I can see it.
Table four.
It's table, it's table four.
Yeah, I can see the...
And if you go all the way... Okay, whoops, whoops, too.
This eighteen right here?
See, there's that eighteen right there.
Yeah.
And so if we're using reserves for eleven million dollars of the reserves for that, is the rate study, is, did you factor in just, um, earning or collecting another seven million to make this eighteen million? So does this three percent reflect that?
Yeah, so us, we're only looking at the first five years with that three percent increase. And, you know, we've got grant funding as well. I think a better table to look at would be the cash flow table, and that's on table ten.
This one, Michael?
So we, yeah, so we factor in everything, your service charges, uh, your O and M, and your vehicles, it's all together. And so you can see in twenty-four, twenty-five, you're getting two-point-four million of revenue, and your operating is one-point-eight.
Right.
So you've got about six-hundred thousand for, uh, for debt service and capital in that year. The next two years, we're factoring in three-point-three million, so you're getting six-hundred thousand plus the grant money. And so you can see that the rates are really generating about six-hundred thousand a year for capital. So over five years, that's about three million.
Three million bucks, okay.
And so the difference between, uh, you know, what you're generating, the six-hundred thousand, and the grant funding to the total of CIP costs is coming out of reserves.
Okay, so let's go back to that. There was a total of eight, let's just do round numbers. There's a total of eighteen million dollars of planned CIP projects. Where do you use eleven million for reserves? That leaves seven, but you're only going to generate three million dollars here.
The rest are grants.
And the rest is grant dollars? Is that how that factors in to get to that other four million?
Yeah, there was about seven, seven million in grants, right? Seven and a half.
So we're not over-collecting. We're actually banking on those grants.
We're actually banking on the grants.
Other grants to finish the projects.
And you still have to factor in that one-point-five million of reserve for keeping the O and M percentage of that.
That was helpful too, yeah.
Okay. All right.
So for clear direction for Michael, I guess my question is, when do we, when does he come back with, what is it that we need next, and when do we want him to come back?
I think Michael's going to come back with, um, do we still want to have him calculate the difference between bringing the commercials to a residential flat?
And see what that difference is.
See what that does to the bottom line, or is that...
No, no, I, I like to see that.
I'd be curious to see it projected out.
Okay.
Yeah, I would.
Both for impact on the commercial customers and impact on our, on our bottom line, on our collection, on our revenue generation, right?
I don't want to, but that's, I mean, that's, you guys...
And whether or not we can do the CIP projects associated with, you know, the wastewater side. If, and what, what would we sacrifice? If you know what is an aside, I'd like to know, and maybe Andrea could tell us, how many buildings downtown are sharing a meter? Do, I'd like to know that.
I, well, I'd love to know the amount of commercial that are using just the bare minimum of water. Yeah. I mean, if it's a nominal amount, and or if they're all sharing, the majority of them are sharing, then it's kind of a non-issue, but...
Is it difficult to run those numbers to full commercial and, and load usage? Just to run the numbers on volume, on current, she just said, uh, sorry. She just said current, um, commercial customers that are using a very low amount of water, very low rate.
Would you be able to look at the...
I mean, and it doesn't have to be like, a presentation, I mean, just a snapshot.
You can email that to us. I don't care. Food for thought, kind of thing.
How many are using the bare minimum and how many buildings are sharing a meter?
Right.
Would you guys even know that? How would you know that?
Oh, Andrea knows.
Oh, she does.
Well, in our system, we track by meter, and then we have the accounts that are attached to that.
To that meter.
So I think the caveat is, she can determine how many are legally sharing a meter, how many are legitimately sharing a meter. We don't know how many are doing it, and the landlord's just building it into the rent, and we've got three tenants. We won't never know that.
We won't know that one, but if there, if we're billing the tenants individually, which we can do with the landlord's permission, then we would be able to see how many are attached to one meter.
And that is built into this current two-eighteen to do a, I'm sorry, what do we call it? I put in my notes, a multi...
Mixed use.
A mixed use.
So anybody, yeah, I'd like to know how many are sharing, because that's an impact on however many are having us do their accounting for them.
Okay, so to summarize, we're, with the united contribution, we agree that we're willing to spend down our reserve to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to offset the increase for the next five years, correct? Okay. And we agree that, except for the questions about the, the commercial buildings downtown, we're okay with a two percent increase to wastewater and sewer. The issue, okay. And then the issue then comes down to, uh, what are we going to charge for water? Are we going to put the, the maximum at three percent or allow that to be our ceiling? And say, for the next year, we're just going to implement a two percent? You know, I, I think for me, the, if, if we did two percent at the end of five years, it's a hundred-and-eighty-five dollar a year, it's a hundred-and-eighty-five dollars more as opposed to three-hundred-and-sixteen. It doesn't sound like a lot of money, but again, it, it could be a lot of money, so, um... And I, I don't know, Michelle, if, again, we go back to the, the opportunity for people to offset some of their bill, yet that's, the dollars we collect are really, are the dollars that are donated or collect through light fees are the dollars that fund that. So, um, there may not be an opportunity to increase that, and it's only going to fall under whether or not they qualify or the PGV cares anyway, correct? So they make forty thousand dollars or less. So, okay, okay. I'm glad we have some time to, to talk about this. You probably don't like the fact we have a lot of time to talk about this, Mike, but...
That's okay. I think this is good. We're getting to, you know, a rate structure that I think everyone can accept.
Yeah.
Yeah, from a taxpayer's perspective, Michelle would care if we did research.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it sounds great.
Well, you know, and, and part of it, and I think the hardest thing, Mike, Michael, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm a mic too, so, most people, anyway, um, I apologize. Part of it is, is I want to go back to what Carol Lane said. There are seventeen hundred ratepayers, you know? But it scares me a little bit when you do those charts and it looks like we're climbing up or we're going to be paying more. Our citizens in CCWD. But again, as you said, that's, CCWD is based on this year, and I don't know how much they're going to ratchet up each year and where they're going to be at the end of five years and where we're going to be at five years. And not that I want to see that, but, you know, I mean, that, that was scary to me at first blush because it's like, holy naters, you know, our citizens are going to be paying more than CCWD. And they have a heck of a lot more ratepayers.
And it really falls on the wastewater side.
Yeah.
That's really where the...
And one thing to keep in mind is that you're going to have inflation as well. And, you know, customers that are on a fixed income, they do get inflationary adjustments. So the two to three percent, I think, is right in line with inflationary increases, which all those agencies are going to be facing. And if you don't do those increases, you're going to be falling behind.
Well, that's my fear, is if we ought to do something, and then five years from now, six years from now, we, we are behind the eight ball now, and then we have to make it, Alvin, you can see that.
It was horrible.
That's how you took over. And so it's a drastic increase. That's kind of what CCWD...
I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to charge people more than I have to, period.
But we got to charge them.
But I don't want to be where I was six years ago. We had raised rates in twelve years.
I think it's cross-country.
It's cross-country, right, yeah.
Yeah, some run by, yeah.
No, I, I...
So I had to interrupt.
Okay, I just want to make a list of, um, to-dos.
Look at your page.
How she do?
Yes, so I got, uh, flat rate for all and the impact of that, moving the commercials to a flat rate. Michael, how long will it take approximately for you to get that information to us? Could it be, could I have that by Tuesday of next week?
I think we're going to have to work to get some data from the city, so it's going to really depend on, on that.
Okay, so we'll do the second meeting in September for that. So by the second meeting in September, we'll have that information. And then the, um, sharing of meters, Michelle, how long do you think, do we have that by? Maybe we should just plan on all of this information coming back to you in the second meeting of September. And that will be the impact of moving everyone to a flat rate, just like a commercial and residential, everyone at the one-ten, just what that would mean to the bottom line. How many, uh, meters in town are, how many businesses, how many locations in town are sharing a meter? Right? We can't get that information for the information that we have. We'll plan on Dewberry making a presentation at the September meeting for CIP projects, both on the water and wastewater side. And the only thing that I don't have is there was some discussion about having staff get the very low commercial usage. Can you, you know, help me understand?
How many are at the minimum? The minimum that are not using, that are just paying the base rate.
That are not using, that are not diving into that. And who would provide that?
That would be Andrea and myself.
Okay, so Michelle will be in charge of giving us how, how many commercial users are currently at the minimum rate? Is that what we're looking for?
Yeah, to see if it's worth even...
The number of...
Well, and that could create a habit, and I know it is splitting hairs. I know we're not going to make all the people happy. But if that function, if that effort determines that it's all retail and antique stores, and we have thirteen, I don't know that we couldn't take those thirteen commercial accounts and move them up to residential.
Okay.
And maybe that's all it will be, but I know we're not going to keep everybody happy.
Are we looking not only for the number of commercials, but what type of business?
I would love that.
Can we do that?
Food for thought.
Just a list of like businesses?
We might be able to, we gloss with Kate.
Okay, please.
Okay. And so all of that will be on the second meeting in September to you. And if we get all of that to you on the second meeting in September, Michael, what would be the next step in this process?
Yeah, so as soon as we get your blessing on the final rate structures, we would need about two weeks to get the mailing out with a Proposition Two-eighteen notice. And then there's a forty-five-day noticing period from the date that they're postmarked to the date of the public hearing. Uh, so based on, um, I guess sending notices out in October, um, you'd be looking at forty-five days after that, let's see.
Do we want our public, we didn't have a great turnout today, and we had a public meeting. Do we want the first form of notification being that? Or do we want to do some other outreach as a soft, uh, effort to communicate prior to it?
Outreach to the community.
Yeah, I, I definitely think we should slow that down just a bit if we could and do other outreach to let everybody know whether they're not finding out today.
And just to be clear, that's after council takes, that's before council takes action?
No, 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 no. I think we're, we're pretty much getting close to what we are comfortable with. But I would like to start getting the message out to the customers, to the ratepayers, before they get that notification that we're starting our two-eighteen.
You know, I, I think...
Am I wrong?
No, you're right. I think the hardest thing, and I, I agree wholeheartedly that we need to create some kind of rate that's going to keep up with the cost of living. I, it's crazy not to do that because all are going to just go backwards. But the most difficult thing that we're going to face is, what'd you guys do with all that money before? How are we going to answer that? And I think moving forward, you know, with Dewberry and staff, that once we complete a project like Booster Way, we can need to celebrate that project so they know at least we're spending their dollars. Because it's hard for me to say, you know, Mel, we're going to raise rates, Mel, and we're going to do all these projects. Is what the hell did you do? What the heck did you do before?
Can that be part of the CIP, uh, uh, presentation is a recap?
Those unused funds are being used.
Right, right.
And there's about our rate...
And so our rates, and we started at five, but now, you know, council decided to spend down to twelve million. I mean, I think we need to dog and pony show this a little bit.
Yeah, and I caution you, I think it's going to be a little bit of a different CIP presentation that's been presented before. It's not going to be Dewberry's, um, cut and paste. I think it needs to be at, at higher level to take our, our direction into consideration, our successes, and gathering of more, more information.
Just to speak on that with the Booster Way, and so, um, unless something else comes up, Booster Way should be complete, uh, about mid-September. And the plans for the next project from Dewberry are due to me in October.
Perfect.
So it's, we're going to finish one, give it a thumbs up, do a little fist bumping, and move right into the next one. Sorry, you never talk to me.
And, and, Steve, I'd like some PR associated with us finishing Booster Way. You know, we, we've ticked off a project and we're moving forward. You know, it's just like, I agree, I mean, we were told by Chris that they were waiting for the cooler weather in September to resurface our near lane. I mean, are we still, that's an aside, that's an aside, but I, you know, we just need...
It's kind of out of sight, out of mind for us.
Why are we celebrating it now? I mean, I walk Booster Way every morning, and there's a whole lot happening every day-to-day.
Yeah, yeah.
So, sorry, one more question for me. If we do all of these things at the second meeting in September, and all of these things being, get you the number and type of... If we do all of these things at the second meeting in September and all of these things being issue, the number and type of very low commercial use, the impacts of a flat rate, how many sharing of meters there are that we are aware of, the Dewberry presentation and hopefully acknowledging the completion of the Booster Way project, that's a whole lot in one meeting. Would you also want to schedule an item for you to take action on the rate study in that same meeting? Or would you like to wait until October? What's your preference on knowing the volume of information you're going to get in September? Do you want to use that momentum to just get it done then or do you want to carry it over to October?
I worry about staff. I don't, I don't know if we should set a hard and fast deadline of the second meeting. You know, if it takes longer to do it and you guys are pushed, we could do, I mean, I'm okay with pushing it out to the first meeting in October.
Yeah, and if you have other things.
Because you've got other things, I mean, if you started working on it, because the second meeting in September is going to be like around the corner.
But, so I think what I'm getting at is would you want to take action in that same meeting? That you're, whether it's September or October.
I would say no.
I'm going to say no.
I think, yeah, digest it for one more meeting and then wait until the next one. I would, whenever we have the presentation, I would bump it that following meeting.
We did look up, the CIP was done in March, so yeah, it is time to at least review it, yeah.
And then at that meeting that we're going to be acting on, we're going to be making the decision. Think about some ideas of how we could do some soft outreach before the mailer goes out. Like, is that social media, is that?
Before the mailer.
Before the mailer's starting our 218, 45-day notice, that thing.
We have a meeting on election day, so I'm going to say we probably don't want to put it on that day where we're making that decision to raise everyone's rates because everyone else is going to be watching something else, so. Just FYI, we have a meeting on that day.
You see what I'm saying? I'd like some options. Okay, yeah.
We have a lot of time too, guys, to implement this.
Yeah.
It seems like a lot of time.
It seems like a lot of time.
I'm going to want to get it buttoned up with this council just because if you go into another different council, you're, you're going to have to go backwards.
We're going to have to work.
Yeah, let's just, I would like to get it wrapped up by the end of the year. Yeah.
Thank you. Clarissa Med?
Yes, ma'am.
Any, any? Oh, public comment, do we have anyone online with us? There's one, one, okay. Do we have anybody that has any comments online? Okay. Seeing none, bring it back for final, wrap it up, put a bow on it, anybody?
Michael, I appreciate all of your work and, and yours also. Can you give Steve some ideas of public outreach other than the mailer that you guys have done in the past? You don't have to do it now, but I'm just, just curious about, you know, public forums and meetings and how those look and they're structured and.
I, I have a comment on that. I'm not sure who's online, but I've been given some ideas from somebody who knows the communication effectiveness methods around here. Many ideas on how to do some public outreach, so I have a whole page of.
Joe?
Yes.
Well, he's, he's, that's, that's a strong, strong point.
He's been great at helping to educate me on different methods of public outreach. So I have many of those ideas.
Absolutely.
In the back pocket.
All right. Yeah, and Michael, I want to, I want to thank you guys. I think that you took all of our takeaways from the last presentation into consideration and it definitely got, got closer to what's a more comfortable rate structure for, for me personally. So I want to thank you guys for all your hard work and thank your staff because I'm sure you worked alongside him a lot to get to where we're at today. So we will see you in a couple of weeks, it'll seem like. And having said that, we're going to move on to item six, which is adjournment.
Thank you.
Thanks.
See you later.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Bye.
We don't have any, I don't have any correspondence or anything to talk about, right? So we're just going to move right on. I'm looking for a motion for adjournment, please.
So moved.
Hi.
I, I.